Alright, so we'll get started. We'll call to order the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty special meeting. The clerk will call the roll, uh, record attendance. If you can hear me.
There you go.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Rainey? Rainey?
He's on mute. He's there, though.
Wait, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Alright.
Okay. Hernandez? Leahy?
Present.
LeBron Martinez? Lisi? McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
He's on mute.
Sullivan?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bacon?
Alright, so we'll get started, um. Just as a reminder, I know a lot of times we're on mute and we forget and we start talking. So. If you have something to say, unmute and then say it, or if I call you, make sure you unmute. So the order that I have for just for tonight is that the city council changed two polling locations for the May nineteenth special election. Under Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section twenty-four, the city council can vote to change a polling place up to or until twenty days before an election. The proposed changes for the two polling locations are as follows. Three A Elmwood Fire Station to Metcalf School. One B Prospect Heights to City Hall. Motion be to take-
I make a motion to change them, or to take them up?
I can't.
All those in favor?
Alright.
All those opposed? Here, no-nos. Uh, just two communications that came in, uh, to the clerk's office. One is from Frank McNeil, who's the Chief Strategy Officer. I think everyone got this. It's from Action Ambulance. Uh, hello Brenna, I'm sorry it took so long to respond. Life's been, uh, fairly hectic. Uh, and our company has been pretty much non-stop in many ways. I've spoken to the fire chief and I told him I really don't feel comfortable with the public and poll workers in the building. He asked us to reply to him in writing, which I will do.
Okay, tell, 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 tell him again when it's time to do that, because I gotta speak in this, okay?
We'll elaborate. We're in a midst of, uh, of clean equipment and trucks between calls all day long. The compressors are allowed, but we would also be concerned about exposing anyone in this area. We are strictly, uh, restricted visitors to the building. Even with our strict guidelines, we've had several employees test positive for the virus. Uh. Your workers use the same restrooms as our crew and would share the same areas required to wash up and change, uh, uniforms. We do clean after each use and simply, uh, not a safe environment, uh, right now. I'm sorry for any convenience. That's Frank McNeil. And then, this is a letter from, uh, the Vice President of Operations Rock R. He both, if I say that right. Uh, Chief Pascal Powsky, uh, I believe that the current climate, uh, for the South Street polling location is unfit for ballot boxes and access to the general public for the five nineteen twenty election. It'd be a direct public health hazard for anyone arriving, uh, to the station, especially those working at a polling location. Since vacating fire stations, we have three crews out at this location, as well as two more that now post here during peak hours. Every day, our units see the most, uh, volume of sick patients in the city, many of whom are known, uh, COVID hotspots. On a typical day, we need to fog disinfect our ambulances multiple times at this site, as well as decontaminate outerwear, store N ninety-fives for sterilization, change uniforms and become, uh, that have become contaminated, and restock PPE. Aside from that, our crew members, uh, already practice social distancing, but to have them in constraints to one or more rooms would increase risk to my, uh, staff, as well as ask them, uh, to mobile, uh, mobile post and ambulances two feet apart from one another. Is my hope that the city can adjust to a less busy city property or station for the safety of our crew, as well for the kinability where staff remain healthy and able to. So those are the two letters slash emails that came in with regards to South Street. With regards to one B, they sent in an email this morning saying that they are prohibiting anyone coming into the building other than residents, which then requires us to look to another spot, and that's why the clerk reached out i- in order to try and get this done, in order to then get the notice out to everyone in a timely fashion. So with that, if there are any questions, I'll look for the hands or on the side here, on the, uh, Counsel Murphy, I see yours, and Counsel Bartley. Counsel Murphy, remember you gotta unmute. Everyone, you gotta unmute if you're gonna talk. So Counsel Murphy is first.
Okay, are you hearing me?
Gotcha.
Okay. Uh, I certainly agree with the, the situation in the fire station, and I think it's great that the ambulance company has brought this to our attention, because obviously they were working with the fire chief to make sure that our firefighters didn't get to any potential, uh, uh, contamination with the virus as well. So I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. And now that I've heard the, the rationale, I'm just wondering, and I I know two B is at Falls City Towers. And I, I, I'm wondering if this is because of the fact that they're elderly and, and ju- and my concern is, obviously, we're bringing people into Falls City Towers where there are elderly people there, and they tend to be the most vulnerable. Uh, have we heard anything about that facility at all?
Yep, so I can make a motion to allow the clerk to answer questions to everyone.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? So the clerk can unmute, and then, uh, Counsel Murphy's question, if you heard it.
Yes. So first of all, I just wanted to thank everybody for taking time to meet on this issue tonight. Um, so to answer Counselor Murphy's, um, question, we the first person I spoke with actually was Matt Mainville from the Housing Authority, and, um, he brought up some concerns about not only Falls City Towers, but also Rosary Towers. And we were able to work out, um, Falls City Towers, he was not as concerned about because the residents, residents come down an elevator that doesn't lead them into the room that we're using. Um, so he was okay with that facility, and the other facility, Rosary Towers, his concern was that residents, um, living in there come and sit in the lobby area where voters come through. Um, so he asked if we were able to use a side door, if we put signage out, and um, I reached out to the state, and the state said we can do that as long as there's signage out. Um. So we're, so we were able to go forward with both of those polling locations. Um, we did have a lot of issues with Ward Four. Um, it is another privately owned building, just like Prospect Heights is. Um, I was in contact with the Reverend there several times over the past few days, and um, I lastly spoke with her quite in length today after she had a meeting with her, um, con- congression. And, um, I think we came to an agreement on certain things that they expect and they don't expect, and, um, we're gonna move forward with being able to stay there as well. My goal was to try to have to move the least amount of polling places as possible, just because it really disrupts voters and whatnot, so, um, we really only went with the ones that were urgent, and these two are the ones that are urgent right now. But seeing some of the issues we've seen right now, um, I think this kind of, um, makes me realize that this could be a, a good discussion for maybe moving some of these polling locations to all public buildings in the future. Um, I think the senior center would be a great place for voting, um, for Ward Four. Um, but I think that that can all be a conversation for a later date.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the thoughts there. My other question regarding voting in City Hall. Uh, will that, where will that be located? And, but-
So our plan for City Hall, um, also to since it's closed to the public right now, and, um, I was working with Mike Bloomberg on that. Um, our plan is to have voters come in through the back door, because it's handicapped accessible. We're gonna have a check-in table right there on the main floor. Um, right next to the stairwell. They'll check in there. We'll have the voting booths set up six feet apart going down the hallway, and we'll have the check-in table at the end of the hallway, and they'll exit out that side, that back, the side door that leads over to the little alleyway, which is also handicapped accessible. So they'll kind of come in, go down, go out, and everybody will have like a one flow in and out. Nobody will have to use an elevator. Nobody will have to use a stairwell, which also allows for, um, City Hall staff at, you know, when the election's over, to only have to disinfect one floor.
No, great idea. Thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts in, in bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Todd's on mute.
Okay, I, I, I'm, yeah, sorry. Did you call me? I swear to clusters, okay. I, I can't hear anybody.
Dave, can you hear us now, or?
Now I got you, Todd.
Alright, alright. So you're up, Dave.
Okay, um. Alright, so, uh, well, yeah, a lot, lot going on here. Um, uh, I, I, I think ultimately we're, we're, we're gonna have to acquiesce to this. Um, but there's gonna have to be a lot more thought that's been put into this, uh, this, and this is pretty much a last-minute notice. So, so we, we all know this, this election was happening. And apparently, this is, this has come down on Tuesday, because I, I got the call from the clerk, uh, was it Monday, Tuesday, yesterday? Or Monday? I'm sorry, Monday I got the call. Uh, yesterday, I just speak with the, the Chief of the Fire Department, and I, I heard his argument. And, uh, and now I understa- I, I understand it a, a lot better now, and, and if, and with the follow-up from that, from Action Ambulance. But th- this is a, a massive change at the last second. So that's, that's par for the course, but that's one. Second of all, I did say, Mr. President, well over a year ago, that we've gotta do something about, about the, uh, about the polling locations. I'm the one that said, said the senior center uh, well over a year ago. So yes, we need that. Third, the fire station, in fact, is a public building. But I think we all know, especially from last year's election, and, and I, I hope the clerk can testify this, that election was, uh, that polling station was, was a disaster. Never mind the one at Metcalf, when there were, there were found to be, uh, illegal postings in Metcalf. What we, we had to have, we had to have the, the sergeant on duty remove the illegal postings. I'm sure you all heard about that, but I wanna make sure you know that. So they were put up relative to the school vote. The sergeant who was on duty saw them, and he, and he, uh, extracted them immediately. But those things happened at three B last fall, and at three A, I think the doors were locked for a while. Um, I hope you're all hearing this. The doors to the polling location were locked. So I think I'm getting the fact, and, and we know that building's, uh, tired. It's well over a hundred years old. It's, uh, it's inefficient. But I said well over a year ago, we've gotta start thinking about where we're gonna do this. Beyond that, a- and, and I, and I, and I don't know who's, who's responsible for, for thinking about it. I'll happily pitch in in any ward in the city, and I'll try to pitch in and think about it. But perhaps Elmwood Towers might work. Perhaps, bless the sacrament, the, uh, the old convent might work. Uh, as, as they are handicap accessible. We've got two more elections coming up. One September first, and I think the general is might be November third. Uh, I, I'm, I'm guessing that this turnout for, for the nineteenth is gonna be horrific. I, I'm ten, eleven, twelve percent would be my, would be my estimation. The September first primary is probably gonna be a lot better, and the November general election, you're talking three quarters of the voters. So it's gonna be a zoo of people. Um, I, I, I hope that we're gonna, we can get past this one now. And then, then the clerk's office, because I think, you know, the clerk's office, again, I volunteered myself to help, to help with any kind of committee or help this out. It, uh, to find another location, whether it's Ward Three or Ward, whatever it is. Um, now somehow Ward Seven's gotten through with one polling location. Ward Six has gotten through with one polling location for a while. Ward Three can certainly get through, but it's, it's a different kind of a layout, especially when you have kind of a, a makeshift elevator that, that helps the seniors get up to the, uh, gymnasium. I, I mean, Counsel McGivern and I vote, vote in there, and Counsel McGivern's well aware of that. I'm not sure if other counselors have been in that building in some, in some period of time, but you, you really need to familiarize yourself with it. It's not conducive. Uh, it's not conducive, in my opinion, to, um, to having two polling locations, um, for any kind of, um, it's certainly not the November vote. Um, yeah, maybe September, you know, turnout's gonna be Brenna, you know, whatever it is, you know, twenty-five percent is a primary, but the general election's gonna be big. I think we know that. So that's gotta be planned out. The last thing is, I'll say, Mr. President, is that wh- when I sent out my email yesterday relative to this, um, uh, I, I had numerous replies saying, what? Wh- when did this happen? And my answer was, I, I found out an hour before it goes, I sent the email. So, um, you know, I, I saw, I think we've gotta hear from the clerk, and I asked the clerk this yesterday, uh, two days ago, but I know she didn't have a chance to answer, but she was gonna have, she was on a conference call with the state. Uh, A, I, uh, so the clerk apprised me about how people are gonna get noticed, so I want the clerk to tell us, the rest of the committee, how people in the wards are gonna get noticed about the change. Second of all, I, I recommended that not only do they get notice of the, of the polling location change, but they get notice through the mail, as well as the opportunity for absentee ballots. I, I, I went on the city's website myself. Not my first time being on it. And, and, and even I, even I, it took me a few minutes to, to, to drill down to, to find the application for an absentee ballot on, on the, on the clerk's website. It wa- it wasn't on the front page. And next time you click on that with all the COVID going on, have fun clicking on that, because you get a COVID update every screen you pop on. So it's, it's somewhat, it's somewhat, uh, aggravating going on that website at this point. So ju- just to circle back and summarize, A, we, we, we probably should go ahead and shut it down for this election. B, we need to think about what we're gonna do for September first, and particularly for November third. And third, I, I think it's vital that we hear from the clerk now, is how her office is A, gonna notice all the voters in three A, and then, uh, I, I can't remember, in Ward One. And then who's gonna pay for that? Thank you.
So, um, we have postcards that are ready to be printed, and they will be mailed within the next couple of days. Um, I just also would like to note that in the Mass General Law, that allows the city council to change a polling location twenty days before the election. It also allows the city council to change a polling location for a special election, which this is ten days before the election. So the law is obviously there for situations like this. Um, thankfully, we aren't within ten days. We're even more than twenty. Um, but like I said, we do have postcards. They're, um, ready to go. They're already made up. We're just waiting to hit the click, the, um, print button as soon as this vote is taken. Um, those will be mailed out, and we went with a postcard size, so people don't have to open it, and they'll see it right when they get it delivered, and it's, um, less expensive than mailing a letter. Um, and anything related to this election that is an extra expense because of the COVID, um, we can get reimbursed from the state. So all of this postage is going to be reimbursed by the state, as well as any extra staff we use for, um, for this election. We've been in contact with the DPW to use some of the workers to help us sanitize um, voting booths throughout the day, and any overtime that the DPW, um, gets through that will be sent to the Secretary of State's office, and will be a reimbursable expense. And what was the other question?
I believe it was on, uh, early voting, getting the, the ballot.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm not doing it, just doing it by itself, so.
The postcard also, the postcard also, at the bottom, um, says that everybody is eligible to vote by mail for this election, because it's part of the new legislation, that any resident is eligible to early vote. Um, I understand your frustrations with the website. As Ryan had stated, um, we're in transition to getting a new website. Um, it is on the voter information page on my, um, city clerk page. It has been for quite some time now. There's a link directly to the application, um, with instructions on how to either download it and mail it, or you can scan it. Um, we can mail residents, uh, application if they don't have a printer. Um, but we do have it on the bottom of every postcard that will be going up, that that's an option.
Any further questions, Counsel Bartley? I see you here.
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna respond to one or two things. Thank you Brenna for all that. I appreciate it. Uh, a- as somebody who, who had, who had the joy of dealing with Secretary Galvin's office today for most of the day, let me tell you, if you can avoid that experience for the rest of your lives, please do so. Uh, re- relative to the, the special election law. Uh, well, not to me, so, you know, that's, that's your call, but not my call. Um, and, and I'm glad they're helpful to you, but, but they were the opposite to me. Uh, but, uh, the, w- whether or not the, the special election law allows for a change in a polling place ten days before an elec- election, wh- which is something that hopefully we'll get a chance to look at down the road. W- when you have a polling location that's been in place for thirty-plus years, and voters are so accustomed, especially senior voters are accustomed to working there, to change a polling location a month, twenty days, or ten days, is, is, I don't think that's in the best interest of, of enfranchising, enfranchising voters, and that's what we should be about, is, is making sure all voters, all eligible voters get the chance to cast a ballot where they're accustomed. I can guarantee you, there're gonna be people showing up to the polls that day to, to, uh, South Street looking for the, the voting location. So I, I wanna hear, I wanna hear, uh, two, two more things. One is, I, 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 in the special election law, does the Commonwealth reimburse us for, for the, uh, for the detailed police officers? That's question one, detailed police officers. Question two is, is somebody, who's gonna be at the polling location a- at, at the, at the fire station, uh, letting people know, or what kind of signage is gonna be there to alert people? Because I, I, I can assure you, you will have numerous people pulling up there, finding the doors locked, and then going home and not voting. And that's the opposite of what we should be doing. So what's the plan for that thirteen-hour window for, for, for the nineteenth?
Yes, we do plan to post, um, signage at the fire station, as well as Prospect Heights. Um, no, the state does not reimburse us for police detail. Um, that's a requirement by law for every election, and it's something we do at every election, so we do not get reimbursed for that. That's part of the budget for the police department. Um, but yes, there will be signage at both locations.
Okay, so I, I'm just gonna, yeah, so I just, that's, that's, so, right, so, so, so get Galvin's office, the Commonwealth is paying for some of the special election, but obviously not all of it. So.
Well, I said anything that, any, I said any expenses that are new because of COVID. Police detail is not new because of COVID. Police detail is in the law, and it's a requirement for every election. It's not a new expense.
Right, I'm hearing that, but this is a special election, and what you're saying is that the Commonwealth would, would usually pay for the special elections.
Oh, yeah, well, they pay for printing of the ballots. They pay for, or, um, they pay for the memory cards that go into all the machines. They pu- pay for those sort of things.
And the poll workers?
No.
They don't, okay, they don't pay for the poll workers, but they're gonna pay for DPW workers?
That's because they're gonna be, uh, that's an expense because of COVID, that we need extra workers to help us sanitize the um, polling places. Which we don't have to do, which we're doing to try to keep our residents safe.
Okay.
And that's what this whole thing is about, is our residents, is what we're trying to do, is keep our residents safe.
Ro- Roger that. That's, and that's, that's a noble thing, and we all-
The number one priority here.
We all, all want everybody safe, right, but, but this, we're having an election, and I want everybody to vote too. So, uh, so just so I'm clear, I, I, what's gonna be posted at the fire station?
Probably the same exact thing that's on the postcard. That attention, Ward Three A residents, your polling location has changed, where it will be, how to get there. That sort of thing.
Okay, and, and just, my final question is, uh, uh, the, the Action Ambulance people. Um, now, obviously, they, they, they know they're in a polling, polling location. And so what's the game plan? Okay, what, what, when are we, let, let me just change this. When are we gonna start to generate a game plan for September first? A- and for November third?
Well, I know count, a couple of counselors, I think maybe you, I think Todd. Um, I'm not sure who else. There was a couple of them that are in charter and rules, so anytime Charter and Rules wants to take it up, I'll be happy to be there.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi was up. Counselor Lisi.
Uh, thank you.
Counsel Lai, he's next, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, um, just wanna make sure that I have everything straight here. Um, three A is being relocated to Metcalf, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And then, um, the Rosary Towers is or is not being relocated?
It is not.
Side door?
One, one B Prospect Heights.
Yeah, Rosary Towers, we're gonna use a separate door.
Okay.
Um, a side door that won't have residents coming in through the building, um, through the main lobby area. They're gonna come into a side building, a side door that directs them right into the room that they vote in, and we'll have signage on both doors as well. For that.
And then it's the, um, Prospect Heights that's being relocated to City Hall?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Cause then Prospect Heights is in the ci- Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So, um, Prospect Heights is being relocated to City Hall for Election Day. Um, and we're not going to have any early voting happening in City Hall, are we?
No, early voting is only allowed through the mail for this election.
Okay.
Um.
And is it the same absentee ballot, or is there a different, um, sort of request that needs to happen?
So we only have, um, absentee ballots, because that's what we were given in, you know, when this election was first scheduled, but then with everything going on, they added into the legislation at the same time as they postponed the election, that they were going to allow early voting through the mail. So the link on the website links you to a special election early voting application, but when you fill that out, you would receive just a regular absentee ballot. The reason they wanna do that is because they wanna have, they wanna be able to separate actual absentee ballots to, um, early voting ballots, because all the postage we use for the early voting ballots, for people that just don't wanna come to the polls because they're scared, we will be reimbursed for all of that postage.
Oh, that's great. So that, that's a easy way to track everything.
Correct, yep, because we put them into a system, um, separately, if there was an absentee ballot application versus a early voting application. But it's the same ballot. They're just tracking the application separately.
Yeah, for the reimbursement purposes. Um, okay, that sounds really great. Um, one more thing. So in Metcalf, um, where do they vote? Do they vote in, I, I, I don't remember them having a gymnasium. Is it the cafeteria on the, on the ground floor?
Gymnasium.
They, yep, they have a gym- gymnasium.
And is it possible to set up in, since we don't have, um, well, yeah, since we don't really have, you know, school in session, I would imagine that the cafeteria, I think that's on the ground level. Um, it, just po- posing it as a possibility to explore, to see if, um, that makes easier access for folks, because they would just be coming in on the ground level, and, and as far as I remember, the, um, cafeteria is on the ground level, so it may.
I just have to check, um, with this, I'm not really sure off the top of my head if Metcalf is one of the schools that they do the meals for the students out of. Um, because that was one of the concerns of the schools, was the schools that had, um, meals being sent out of them. So if they are one of the meal sites, then we would not be able to use the cafeteria, as that's probably where they distribute the food from. But it's definitely something to look at, and I definitely will look at that when we, um, make our rounds the day before to set up.
Great, and I know that we are, um, creating the, um, I think by, at the end of this week, or next Monday, at the, at the latest, we should have made that transition to the new website. Um, can we use the Everbright system, the like emergency alert system, to, um, blast out the link to the o- early voter, um, you know, link on your website to help facilitate the information getting out throughout the entire city?
Um, it's something I can definitely talk to Mike about.
Yeah, I think as much as possible, we wanna keep people home, um, and, you know, not expose the poll workers, or, you know, or residents, um, any, a- a- any more than they need to be in terms of like going out and living their, their daily lives. So if we could provide them the opportunity to vote, um, vote early or absent- absentee, um, and make sure that, that, um, Everbright system is utilized to, to blast out those options to folks. Um, you know, people, people may very well like to, um, e- elect themselves into, uh, those options, so. Uh, yeah, definitely explore with Mike. I would love to, um, you know, just get a communication back as to what the, the outcome there is.
Sure. And we do, we do have, um, we were able to get um, masks, gloves, sanitizer, sanitizing wipes from Mima helped us get all of that. So we have that for everybody, for all the poll workers, and today I spoke with the state about, um, enforce, enforcing masks. And if you don't have a local mask, um, rule, you don't have to, you cannot enforce it, but since Hoyok does, if it's still in place on Election Day, um, residents are gonna be, you know, asked to come in with a mask. If they don't have a mask, we're gonna have extras for them to wear one. But that's only if the, um, that is still in effect, which I'm assuming it will be, and that was one of, um, St. Paul's concerns, was that they wanted everybody coming in to wear masks.
And it, it would be a requirement, right?
Yes, yep, yep.
Um, and who would be enforcing that? Is the poll, are, are the poll workers, or like the, um?
I would say the police officer will enforce that.
Okay, great, and e- every location will have, uh, an officer detail to help, um, with that enforcement?
Yeah, and I plan to reach out to Captain Pratt, um, within the next few days, when we get everything finalized, to go over all of these things that are a little bit different than a normal Election Day.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then, I mean- Mm-hmm. Um, and then, I mean, I I hope we could bring this order that I filed um up relatively um soon about um really seeing what the possibility is to have those September and November elections um by mail only. Um, because again, it's about exposures and reducing exposures and risk um to our residents. Uh, and so, um.
I can share with you an email we received from the Secretary of State's office. Um, it doesn't sound like that's gonna be a possibility to do mail-in only. Um, but I think they're gonna probably do the early voting by mail allowed for September. There's not going to be any in-person early voting for September, only for November. But I I what what I was getting out of the Secretary of State's office is that would never be something we would do or just vote by mail only.
Okay, so this is going to be very much a trial run for September and then November in terms of um the the polling location, making sure that they're accessible, making sure that they're sanitized, making sure that people understand um what residents have to do to actually access the polls. Um, and then the absentee and early voter options. Um, I do hope that we can u- utilize that um emergency alert system to to get that information out to folks because I I think that um uh people will want to opt into that if they can.
Okay.
All right. Well, thanks so much. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
You thank you, Counselor President McGee. Um, just a couple of different things I wanted to bring to attention tonight. First of all, I want to uh thank Brenna, uh the city clerk and also her staff as well. Because obviously this is a a very well thought out plan. Uh, she comes uh to us tonight with a um a lot of information. And uh it's still early enough where we can kind of uh walk through this and figure this out. So thank you Brenna and thank.
Thanks, Jim.
Uh, because I greatly appreciate it and I know the residents will as well. Um, Ryan, as always, um, you're kind of the guy that's um uh right behind uh, right behind all of us. So thank you for putting all these things together. Um, if you can hear that, that's my dog. I wanted to play with some other dogs that that are outside. So uh quickly you can settle down. So a couple of things I do want to talk about is this is a pandemic, you know, uh, we have to change different things for voting. So be it. This is what we have to do. We have to do a lot of other things too. And so a lot of people are scrambling at the last minute. All right, well, we have to learn to um we have to, we have to learn how to pivot and this is what we're doing. So I think that the city of Hoyok's doing a great thing. Um, one of the things I would like to offer is I want to think down the road, should we still be going into towers? Should we be going into senior centers? Should we be going to City Hall? What I think that we should do for voting is what they do, or maybe they don't do, but maybe it will be the first. When you go to a wedding that's outside, what do you do? You have to do a lot of things. One of the things you have to do is you have to rent a big trailer for bathrooms. How about we get a trailer? I designed one right here. You get a trailer that has an in and out. You can park in a parking lot. People could be six feet away, social distancing. You could have a table set up on the inter. And you can have a table set up on the exit. It's gonna be a cost, but yet we're gonna have, we 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 won't have to worry about compromising anyone's health. We won't have to compromise getting a place. We could rent these trailers. All there are could be empty. We have stairs going in. People go in and vote. And they leave. It's simple. Uh, it's gonna some cost to it, but not a lot. I think that we should move forward. We're gonna have to find other places. People are not gonna want people, random people coming to places. I can't believe how lucky we have been in the last 20 years going to different places. I mean, I really think that we've been extremely lucky. Um, so I I think that we should kind of pivot here and make a, make a a bold decision, maybe not for this election, but for the next election. Now, for this election, uh, I don't think that we have to ask anybody. The city of Hoyok owns this um, this for lack of better words, um, robocall system. Robocall system, the city pays for, we can most certainly use this. Why couldn't we? Why couldn't we? Tell everybody in the neighborhoods or go out to the whole city and tell them that we are going to change these two locations. Uh, with the postcard, that's another avenue. You could put it on social media. We could put it on Twitter. You could put it wherever. You can also put in the channel 15. People are home. They're watching TV. People don't have uh huge schedules. There's no place to go. So if they do go to the fire station and they see a note, good, then they're gonna go to the next place. They're not gonna go home and not vote. I mean, come on, this is a pandemic. Thank you.
Counselor Talbott?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, thank you Brenna for the work you're doing. Uh, I think it's important to realize that um, you know, what we have to do here is take care of our residents and the the safety of them. Of course, the importance of voting is is something is a right that all of us have that is very important. Um, the the work that you're doing is getting the word out. And my concern was how does everybody get notified? And I know usually by the mail, by postcards is the best way. Um, and any other media, any type of robocall or or social media that we can use to get the word out to people. Um, I I think uh as Jim stated, somebody goes to a polling place and somebody really wants to vote and I know people will vote, they don't care where they have to go to vote. They're gonna get their vote. They gotta make sure it counts. Um, they're gonna get there. But um, I I like the idea about City Hall, the way you go in there, you go out, you go out the back door and it's uh safety for everybody. And um, I'm also willing to to work on one of the boards looking at uh the future of elections in Hoyok and future voting precincts that uh are are important to voters that uh easy access and and safe for all our residents. Um, I'm very familiar with Metcalf School and the stairs going up and how difficult it is. Usually uh each election, I try to get the every uh uh precinct in the city to see how things are operating and and how uh how the the situation for people getting to vote is. And uh Hoyok is is a city that uh does do a great job in in getting people given the opportunity to vote. So um, thank you for the work to do. This is a new way we gotta deal with things. I think this is gonna be going on to the throughout the summer um and how we deal and be safe uh with everybody. Uh, social distancing, masked all the time. And uh I think people are starting to to see the the message that safety is 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 work for everybody. So thank you for the work you do. And I'm I'm willing to go along and uh get these precincts changed so the people can get out to vote in a safe manner. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. And uh to the city court, thank you Brenna for bringing this to our attention. I think it's important that we make these changes this evening for the special election, certainly understandable under the circumstances that we are facing. Um, I do want to point out that one thing I'm aware of with the fire station on South Street is it's only recently that the fire department ordered the ambulances mutual agreement, ordered the ambulances out of the fire stations. Uh, that was to to avoid cross contamination uh between both the uh employees for the ambulances and of course our firefighters themselves. So there's very little choice as far as the fire station goes. And we have no say over the uh Prospect Heights situation being that it's privately owned. Um, I do share one concern with Counselor Bartley's, but that's for the September, November is Metcalf is and City Hall are confined spaces for a larger turnout election. And I think we all need to put our thinking caps on and see if we can come up with something that makes, maybe not just for those two sites, but for any site that's confined with the address, coming goings with once you're inside. A a few questions. Uh, one, one related to the the polls themselves. At Metcalf, I know when we vote, we have tables that are designed with uh with four cubicles where we go in.
We're not gonna use those.
Okay, so we'll be.
We're not gonna use it for the. We're gonna, we still have the old ones that are all separate that plug into each other to light up. Um, so we're gonna pull those back out and use those. We're not gonna plug them in though because we're gonna separate them six feet apart.
Okay, that's, thank you. That's good news. Um, I I'm sure the state has given all municipalities a a series of criteria besides the normal ones that we're living by in terms of an election and and being uh safe with COVID. Um, one, one of my thoughts is is occasionally, and it's happened at City Hall, it's happened in my workplace, is there's a positive test of an employee or someone that's been in the building. And the building is shut down at very quick notice or for sometimes for up to two weeks. If one of these locations has a shutdown right at the day or day before the election, is there an emergency way to handle that?
Um, I'll have to reach out to the Secretary of State's office about that. Um, that's not something we've discussed because most of our polling locations will not, like all the schools are are vacant. Um, it really would have been Prospect Heights, Falsetti, if the, yeah, probably Falsetti would be the only one.
Or City Hall?
City Hall, oh, City Hall, yeah, City Hall. Um, I don't, I don't anticipate that's gonna happen just because everywhere is is empty or I'm sure that there is positive cases in Rosary Towers or Falsetti now. Um, and the building itself is not actually vacant because it's the downstairs we use. And the rest of the buildings are the schools. So they're empty anyways. So, but it's definitely something I'll reach out to the Secretary of State's office about i- i- if there was an emergency, what we would do in that situation.
And then hopefully there are no, no emergencies, but just in case.
Yeah, hopefully. Yeah, definitely I'll reach out.
And again, thank you for uh bringing us to our attention and uh I certainly understand and we'll we'll do our best for uh September, November to help you out and do what we can.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lisi, the hand was up and I saw you wave, I didn't know.
Thank you. I think I was just going to mention, as um Brenna already did, that both these locations are presently um empty. Um, so I think that the the risk is uh very low just because they're they're not having any sort of um work or traffic happen within within the buildings themselves at this point.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear. I'm not sure if everybody's been in Metcalf for some time. Uh, the cafeteria's in the basement. I'm not sure how we'd we'd get any handicap people down there.
So we'll just do them both in the gym. There's.
Mr. President? Yeah, uh, Counselor Grady, I hear ya.
Just quickly, I don't want to bring up a sore subject, but you have a building over there on North Hampton Street with a huge cafeteria. It could be used for an emergency situation, the Lynch School.
Yeah, I don't think you can use that building. But we have, uh, Counselor Bartley, I saw you waving.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, mic's on.
I'm muted, yeah. Uh, Jim, the uh the elevator at Metcalf, I'm just through the chair to Jim, the elevator at Metcalf uh starts at the ground level where you park your car and and it kind of goes up to the basketball gym area, that floor. It also goes down to the basement area where the cafeteria is. So I I I don't think that's the worst idea I ever heard to to consider having it in in the cap, you know, 3B and and the gym and 3A and the cafeteria. If we if we have to do that there for uh September, then then we do. I just want to say one other thing for consideration i- is that, you know, it's our building, the fire station's our building. I understand that the action ambulance has a lease and I see their email uh dated here April 27th. And I'm glad, I'm glad that they brought it to our attention. And on top of that, uh Chief Prescottowski advised me that a couple of the action employees have contracted COVID as well. So that's not in this email, but Chief Prescottowski can convey that to me that that in fact happened uh at that facility. But I will say.
I'm pretty sure it is in the email.
Sorry?
Sorry to interrupt, but I'm pretty sure it is in one of the two emails that I sent. I could be mistaken, but I'm almost positive.
Uh, I I don't see it clearly in the one that I have in front of me, but but regardless, uh, it's 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 it is in there. But since it's a city's building, I I I mean, it's not clear to me why, not for this election because now this is, this literally is last minute, uh, the state law be darned, um, about the 10 day rule, which, you know, I I I'm still thinking it's gonna be tough for people to turn around, but I I hope I'm wrong uh when they see the, when they see the postcard note. But the, since it's a city's building, it, when we have, when I, because I will file an order on this for for next Tuesday and we'll we'll send it to Charter and Rules. And but with enough uh enough lead time, perhaps action ambulance could vacate the space for a period of time, relocate where they used to be at either Station 5 or or Station uh or the 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 main fire station. And they can operate out of there for a, I mean, this is not exactly a a major lift for them since they've already operated out there for for years. And and it's basically employees and equipment in the ambulances, which there are ample bays at at those aforesaid uh fire stations. And if not, maybe we could work out another, another place for them. So so when we have this in committee and 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 I know that the 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 chair is not here right now, at least I don't see her here. Um, but but when we have this in committee, uh, that's one of the things I I hope we can, we can discuss relocating them, relocate action ambulance to another fire station, again, where they've been before numerous for for many years. And and then we could have our our vote there. And and that may be the, in in the best interest of everybody, particularly for November 3rd because I I find it hard pressed to believe we're we're gonna find a uh, an alternate public building between now and November 3rd. I I I don't, I don't see it. I mean, I we, in war three anyhow, it's it's tough to see how Blessed Sacrament could step up or or even the um uh, even the uh, the the center school, uh, which was the old uh, old nursing home on on North Hampton Street. I I just don't think they have adequate parking or space. So, anyway, thank you.
Um, just one thing from the email from Frank McNeil, who's the chief strategy officer for action ambulance. Middle of the paragraph, uh, the compressors are allowed, but we also are concerned about exposing anyone to the area. We restrict visitors to the building, each uh with strict guidelines. We have had several employees test positive. So that was in that email that I read out at law. So with that, if there's, I see no more hands or no more questions, the motion would be to approve the change of 3A Elmwood Fire Station to Metcalf and 1B Prospect Heights to City Hall. Counselor Leahy?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I could go second.
The seconded, so although, uh, do we need a roll call?
Yes, please, because we have to send the vote to the Secretary of State's office.
So clerk will call the roll. I I did not pull a name, but I'm pulling a name. It's Counselor Anderson Bergos, sorry. And clerk will call the roll.
You win.
Absolutely.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yeah.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Wait your vote, you approve the change in of those polling locations. That's the only item on the agenda. So the motion is to adjourn. And thank you everyone for coming on and I wish you all a great weekend, weekend. It's supposed to be 74 on Sunday, so enjoy. And then we'll have our first finance and then other subcommittee meetings next week.
Todd, before we get.
Yep, yep, Counselor Leahy?
I have a $600 worth of uh gift cards. Uh, you asked me to purchase. What should I do with those?
Uh.
Ask Ryan, he'll let you know.
Well, we'll take it up in committee.
Everybody have a great night. Be safe.
All right, motion to adjourn, all those in favor, all those opposed. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good job, Brenna. See ya.
Bye, good night, everyone.
Bye.